Good evening. Should like to call this Fairfield City Council Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District Housing Authority Meeting to order, please, for Tuesday, June 20th. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Vicaro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tim.
Here.
And Mayor Price.
Here. And the invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Bertani, please. Pamela, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. Lord God Almighty and everlasting Father, we thank you for bringing us to another day. And as we go about this city's business this evening, let us send our prayers and concerns to those all around, not just the United States, but the world and Europe and so many other places that are experiencing violence. We pray that you keep us safe, God, and that you empower our community and our public safety officers and our leaders, all of us, with what we need to keep ourselves safe in this world. We pray for our family members who are traveling, those in this body and watching from home who will be traveling during the summer months. We pray for safe travel. And we thank you, God, for all of our wonderful graduates as they go off to their new lives in new places. Keep them safe as well. We pray for your safety. We pray for your governance. We pray for your strength. And most importantly, we pray for your wisdom. It is in the name of Jesus Christ who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God now and forever, that we ask all these prayers. Amen.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Certainly. Would you please join me?
Thank you very much. We did meet as a city council in closed session earlier this evening, and there is no reportable action that was taken. So, thank you very much. We turn to council reports. Councilwoman Vicaro, would you like to begin, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it's always great to see so many people in the audience, so I'm going to keep this real short. I just wanted to, you know, thank our firefighters and our police officers. I know during the hot weather, things get kind of crazy out there. I know there's fires that are starting all over the state and other states. And I know with our police, when the water, when the weather starts getting hot, people start getting hot. And, you know, so I just want all of you guys to be very safe. And we're not going to see everyone on the fourth, by, till after the Fourth of July. So, I want everybody to please have a safe Fourth of July and be careful out there. Remember fireworks are not legal in the city of Fairfield. So, just come to the parade and enjoy that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I agree with my colleague. It's great to see this chamber packed. This is the way it should be. This is, this is, these are your rights. We are your servants, and we're always better for it when you show up for a meeting. So, thanks for coming out. Thanks for watching from home. I just want to remind everyone that I am holding office hours. My office hours are on Tuesday and Thursday from 4:30 to 5:30. Please call the city clerk, Eva Hoff, if you would like to schedule a time to come down to the office hours. I've had a few folks come and visit, and it's great because we can talk about issues of concern to you, and I don't have you on a stop clock. No little red light goes off after five minutes or so. So, if there's anything you'd like to discuss with me, one-on-one, please feel free, Tuesday, Thursday, 4:30 to 5:30, please call Eva Hoff, and she will schedule the appointment. And that's everything I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate with Councilwoman Vicaro said, and that is, we really mean it. Fireworks are not legal any kind. There are no safe and sane fireworks, and we don't allow it here, even if you bought it in Susan City. There are a lot of reasons for that. Number one, obviously, fire hazard. Number two, we're tired of sending our firefighters and police out all over on that night. It costs us a lot of money. Number three, and usually it's really my number one, but is it scares people's pets who are at home, even inside the house. I get to sleep Fourth of July with all of my animals, which are a lot, except the horse, in my bed. And I don't mind that, but I just want to say it's not fair to the animals. So, please do not use it. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I've had, I don't know, probably in the last couple of months, people have contacted me and want to talk about a stand-down order from the police department not to arrest or mess with the homeless, or if they're not giving tickets. And I had never heard this before, but it seems like it's an underlying rumor, so I figured, you know what, let me just throw it out there. I spoke with the city manager the other day. In the last two years, we've given about 320 citations for the camping ordinance. We have a couple of those ordinances. What happens once the police department gives those citations out? Of course, it goes to the DA and the judges, and it's probably a horse of another color. But the police department's doing something. As far as a stand-down is, they legally will arrest or do what they need to do in conjunction with what the law requires or what the law allows. Can't put them in a police car and take them out of town. You can't go dump them in another city. There's, I mean, that's serious ramifications legally, civilly, everything else. So, wherever this came from, oh, and traffic units not giving tickets. Our traffic unit is down. Obviously, the entire police department is down. Last I heard, I think they issued about 5,000 citations. So, if you're one of the folks that got a ticket, you're probably saying, no, the officers are out there. So, I just wanted to bring that up, that there is no stand-down order. We want to do more. They want to do more. We're getting there. It's just, just a matter of manpower and, obviously, the priority calls. So, I wanted to clear that up. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I should like to report very quickly that yesterday morning, 40 of our middle school students are heading south. They're going down to Vandenberg Air Force Base, and they will get to see the future of space travel. And they may have an opportunity to see SpaceX do a launch while they're down to this week. And the STEM project, that's science, technology, engineering, and math. These are the students who are very, very bright, very talented, and what an incredible opportunity they're going to have for this week. And then the other thing I should like to talk about very quickly is that the Public Safety Academy had its first high school graduation. Pretty remarkable experience, seven years in existence, and many of those students graduated with highest honors, and they are college-bound as well as pursuing careers in a variety of other fields. And then finally, last Thursday night, over at Paradise Valley Estates, that's the retired community for military officers, they opened their memory care unit, some 19 beds, recognizing that dementia and Alzheimer's are increasing. And what a treat it is, what a treat, to be the mayor of the city of Fairfield, to be a council member in Fairfield, and to have that kind of a facility located here to serve all of our military veterans who might happen to have needed that. And it's great, Chuck, that we have the two golf courses there, too. Again, heard a lot about that. And I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for being part of the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Deer Creek. What a joy that is. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I see a lot of employees in the audience, and I could easily take up this meeting praising them for a lot of great work recently, and I've tried to do that in some of my communications to you and on Facebook. But in particular, I'd like to highlight three individuals that are in this room, and it starts really off with a deep thank you to you for your leadership and guidance. You know, your direction has borne fruit over the past couple of years. It started last year when we received a statewide award for our work at Parkway Gardens, and that continued this year as we were distinguished for our work over on Dana Drive and North Bay Healthcare. But the three individuals that I want to call out, and they don't know I'm going to do this, but it's appropriate, is Heather Sanderson, I believe she's up in the front row, Don Labarre over there in the back of the room, and Nathan Atherton. And why I deserve to point them out to tonight is for three reasons. One, with Heather, she responsible for our PAL program, and I know Councilwoman Bertani takes great pride and cooks meals there for there. I'm waiting for her to cook meanwhile one of those meals. I know I'll get there soon. Vegan, of course. But, you know, PAL was not-
You sure you're fingerprinted?
I've been fingerprinted. I'm good. PAL, PAL received two distinguished nominations at the Buzz Awards, and that's nothing to take lightly, nonprofit of the year, and they are the nonprofit of the year, even though they didn't win. They also received partnership of the year. Unfortunately, they had to lose to Dana Drive, so I'm sorry, Heather. But also today, I was at our Rotary meeting, and once again, PAL, Heather's leadership shone through with her partnership with Rotary. The Rotary Success Scholar Program, we handed out awards to distinguished young leaders in our community who are looking to go to college and pursue life after high school. So, it's really exciting to see that. So, I want to acknowledge her for her fabulous work, great work, absolute dedication to the youth in this community at PAL. And then with Don, I really want to point out her great work on Dana Drive. So, I don't know what the specific number is. All I can tell you is the calls for service are way, 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 way down at Dana Drive, and that's a protracted partnership between our Quality of Life Task Force, Public Works, Police, City Manager's Office, to really bring a comprehensive approach to neighborhood revitalization. Very proud of our work in there. And then Nathan, just really fabulous innovation. So, I've shared with you a beautiful image of a bus that's moving through the community celebrating 70 years of the Air Force and Travis in our community. So, you know, we take tremendous pride in being home to Travis Air Force Base, and I'm very just honored that Nathan came up with that idea, executed it with Gail and the base and the rest of the team, and really has brought forward a real gem to the community. So, I just want to say thank you to all of them in front of all of you for their great work. Thank you.
David, before we, isn't there something you'd like to show everybody?
Yes, the award.
Ah. That was the Buzz Award. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Uh, no, not this evening.
Madam Clerk, your report, please.
I don't have anything to report tonight. Thank you.
We turn, then, to presentations.
Life After High School Scholarship Award presentation by Julie Hilt from the Solano County Bar Association.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me? Good evening. So, about five years ago, the Solano County Bar Association started a small scholarship called Raising the Bar. And the game, the goal of the scholarship was to offer a small cash award to individuals that would be given the choice of books to read and then write an essay, and then based on the essay that they submitted, our scholarship committee reviewed them and then would award them to the individuals. And the goal of the scholarship really is that we recognize that not all youth will be going immediately to college. Some will need to go to the work, into the workplace, and some may be working to support themselves through college. So, we figured that, you know, what would their needs be? They may need help with transportation. They may need workplace-appropriate clothing, which would be different to perhaps, you know, what they like to traditionally wear. And so, these were the things that we took into consideration. So, each year, we've been partnering with the PAL and working with Heather to provide these scholarship opportunities to some of the PAL members. And this year is no different to the last few years, and we have the chair of our scholarship committee, Benedette Curry, here, and she will announce this year's winners.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, nice to see you this evening and to be here for this very wonderful honor to recognize these four individuals who have, as Julie mentioned, taken the time to choose a book of their choosing that we offered them. They chose a book, they read it, and they provided an essay as part of the competition to explain to us, then the committee, the challenges that they saw in the particular book and how that related to their own life. And so, as the chair, as Julie said, I'm the past president of the Solano County Bar Association. I have the current president, Tom Healy, and another past president, current Honorable Judge Healy, here to support this presentation. So, without further ado, I would like to award the first awarty, John Choi. Yes. Actually, John. John, perfect. And just because public speaking starts at an early age, what I'd like to do is to have John let us know what book you read and a little bit, something about it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Well, I read Hacksaw Ridge, and one thing I learned from that is that perseverance is very essential in life. Constant persevere, and you'll get what you want. And that's it.
And I, I did forget to mention, this is a $500 award, and so it's, as I said, this is the fun part. So, the next one is Maria Morales.
A book I read was I Am Malala. A couple things that I learned from the book is that it can be, you can, even if there's a lot of obstacles in the way, you can keep fighting and fight for your goals, and that's something along the book that I, okay. I recommend it. Read it, guys.
Our next one is Kaylin Webster.
So, the book I read was A Place to Stand, and one thing I learned the most about the book is just not to let your past define where you can go in the future. No matter what you've been through, anything, you could still achieve what you put your mind to. So, thank you.
And last, but certainly not least, we have Ome Bobroski. Oh, there we go.
One thing I learned was that Malala had a very rigorous path growing up, and me being, growing up in Fairfield, California, I'm very fortunate with the stuff that's, like, given to me. So, I feel like if she can do it with all the obstacles about her, I can do it just as good.
And on behalf of the council, I would like to thank the Bar Association for making this presentation this evening. Certainly, it's a game changer in their lives, and they speak so eloquently. Thank you very much, Association. Thank you. Our second presentation, Madam Clerk, please.
Pride Month, excuse me, Pride Month, June 2017 proclamation, read by Councilmember Vicaro.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this proclamation is for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month, June 2017. Whereas the city of Fairfield is a community that values diversity and celebrates our differences, and whereas in the city of Fairfield, all residents are urged to respect and honor our diverse community and celebrate and build a culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. And whereas many communities and organizations throughout the United States celebrate June 2017 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month to recognize the contributions of the LGBT community and celebrate diversity. Now, therefore, I, Harry T. Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim June 2017 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month in the city of Fairfield to remind everyone to work together to advance the principles on pit, upon which our great nation was founded, and to celebrate the great diversity of the city of Fairfield. Thank you. Okay. Accepting this award will be Tom Bilbo. And Supervisor Monica Brown.
Citizens of Fairfield, City Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for this proclamation for the LGBT community. It means a lot because it shows acceptance and a lot of ground that has been trodden over, over our history. And it's, it's really nice to see that we have come this far, that in almost every city in Solano County, bodies like yours, as well as in organizations, the same bodies that govern those organizations are making proclamations like this for this month. And it means a lot to the citizens of Solano County that are LGBT, as well as our allies that support us. And to thank you for your proclamation, we would like to present the city of Fairfield with an LGBT pride flag to be flown at your pleasure.
Thank you, Tom. And Supervisor Monica Brown, you wanted to comment also, please?
I'm just very honored that my office supported Pride Weekend. It was wonderful. We had a great time, especially Saturday night was a lot of fun, a lot of dancing. But, but even more than that, I want to just reflect back on our scholarship winners. The one thing that Hacksaw Ridge meant to me is that you stay true to your values, no matter what obstacles are in your path. And so, equality, treating everybody with respect and kindness, as well as the fact that as a, as a Solano County, sorry, Solano Community College trustee, I was able to vote yes on our resolutions, and the same thing with the county, and that we were able to fly the proud, the flag proudly for the month of June. And so, Tom is right. We're working on it, but that doesn't mean that we have achieved equality for everybody, and we need to stay true to our core values, which is that in the United States of America, everybody is to be treated with respect and kindness. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we turn now to the process for public comments. Madam Clerk?
Just start reading? Okay. Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to me prior to the time for public comment on that item. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes total with one minute to summarize their remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And our first speaker will be Arleda Courtwright, please, to be followed by Andrea Zanetti.
Good evening. My name's Arleda Courtwright. I happen to be the chair of the Fairfield-Nerisaki Sister City Program. And tonight, I have one of our students who's going to be heading to Japan in about three weeks with a group of five other students and a chaperone to spend three weeks in Japan, staying with the host family and seeing everything that, that the Nerisaki area has to offer. And he's here to tell you about a special opportunity to help the student group, and this is Zach Johnson.
Hello, I am Zach Johnson. I'm a going-on 11th grade IB student at Armio. And what got me in this program was a desire to go see the world, just go overseas, go just explore the world. And the Sister City and the city especially have been helped, gave me a diverse community that I was able to seek out this opportunity through the Sister City Program. And I would like to give the council flyers in order to help us fund this as well as facilitate the kids who come here. And also, any audience members who would like a flyer.
Tomorrow night, we're having a fundraiser at Panera Bread right over by the mall from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. If you eat with a meal there and bring a flyer, they will contribute a portion of the proceeds to the student group to help defray their expenses. The flyers are available on our Facebook page, Fairfield-Nerisaki Sister City Program, or you can, there'll probably be some spares out there in front that we can leave for people, too. Thank you very much.
And our next speaker, please, Andrea Zanetti. To be followed by Anna Patero, please.
Oh, is it not on? Oh, I assume you all could hear me. I'm all base. Specifically, there's a video tech position which is only being filled at halftime, and this was previously a full-time, it was filled full-time. My concern is twofold. The first is the impact that the reduction has on the community. As you probably know, the video services program reaches into the local high school and community college programs and offers a pretty great service there and a resource for students to gain experience in the field of video creation and production, among other things. But second, and no less important, is the personal impact that this reduction has on people, right? So, the staff that are being cut part-time. And imagine how you get your bills paid when, you know, somebody says, okay, now do it all on half a paycheck. The, the impact is devastating. So, the person holding this position currently is Whitney Skilman, and she's here in the audience today. She's been employed with the city for, I think, over a decade and a half, and for the last three years, she has provided a pretty valuable role, a pretty valuable service in her role with video services. Whitney has regularly gone above and beyond for the city in her position, in all of her positions. And in her current position in video services, she has stepped, stepped up when the city has needed her to do more. She has reached out and engaged fully and overcome some of the challenges that that department has had. And I know that over the past couple of years, the city's Channel 26 program has received awards and accolades in a pretty high number as a direct result of the hard work and dedication that Whitney has brought to that, to that role. The budgeting decisions that you all make as council members have real-life effects on employees and the public, and this is an example of one of those real-life effects. We think it's a mistake and entirely unnecessary to reduce the position to a halftime position when the city's budget is as healthy as it is, and I'm asking council to reconsider this being a halftime position and reinstate it to being a full-time position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anna Patero, to be followed by Tom Nelson, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, good evening. You oversee one of the more beautiful cities in Nor- You oversee one of the more beautiful cities in Northern California, and Fairfield's cable access does a magnificent job of promoting it. Good evening, I'm Anna Patero, and I'm here to address the benefits of Fairfield Cable Access under the leadership of Mr. Bill Way, who is doing a tremendous job, by the way, but more specifically Ms. Whitney Skilman and her vital contribution in promoting the City of Fairfield. I've traveled to more than 20 states in our republic, and each city, I turn on the local cable access channels to see what their cities have to offer. And I will tell you this, Fairfield's cable access is better than most in its promotion of the local attractions and also our local businesses. Ever since Fairfield Cable Access partnered with Solano Community College, high school students in their media arts programs, specifically at Armio High School, along with Solano College's broadcast students, are gaining experience, but more important, a greater appreciation for Fairfield by working with Whitney to promote their city. Whitney not only introduces Fairfield's youth to the wonders of Fairfield, from the local attractions to our businesses, she teaches them the process of producing videos, from script-writing to editing, the results of which can be viewed on Channels 26, 27, and 28. Last year, this city lost over $60,000 of our taxes. Keeping Whitney Skilman amounts to tax dollars well-spent because the rewards are more than monetary. They are social and cultural by introducing our youth to the beauty of their city while promoting their city. Caring about one city leads to caring for one city. As a member of this community who has seen firsthand the tremendous impact that Whitney Skilman is having on the promotion of our city via Fairfield's cable access, I strongly believe that it is practical, prudent, and advantageous for the City of Fairfield to keep Whitney Skilman because she is invaluable. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Tom Nelson, please, to be followed by Whitney Skilman, please.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Tom Nelson, and I promised to come back this evening to report on my meeting with the City Manager, Mr. White, regarding allowing kids under 18 to reserve in advance tee times at the two municipal golf courses. It's the first you've heard about this, right? In summary, we identified the following. Unless the golf courses are booked 100% in advance every day by adults and there are no open tee times, the current policy is actually costing the city because it discourages not only kids, but their parents and guardians from coming out and playing. To be clear, adults, too, cannot make tee times after 12 noon if they have even one junior in their foursome. This policy is part of the golf course manual and can be only modified by U5, the City Council. And thirdly, the golf course manual is scheduled for review by the Citizen Golf Advisory Board to the mayor. So Mr. White suggested that we essentially kick this can down the road and do nothing now and wait for the GAB's report later this year. For the reason that the current policy is costing the city money and hurts the kids mostly during the summer vacation months, I respectfully suggest to the Council, A, to add this issue to the next council meeting's agenda, and B, change the policy only at Rancho Solano. In this way, statistics can be captured to compare the public's play behavior between the two golf courses, Rancho and Paradise. This will give the Golf Advisory Board actual analytics that will help them make the best future recommendation to you, the Council, and to the mayor. So please remember, if for any reason you want to change this policy back, you can do so at any time. So what is, basically, what is the big deal? Why wait when you can do something so simple now that can benefit the kids and the community and help the Golf Advisory Board with their later review? So who wants to lead and move to add this to the agenda? Who cares more about the kids, the men or the women?
Send it just, please.
I'm done.
You're done, okay, Tom. Question, Catherine?
When does the Golf Advisory Board meet?
Their next meeting is July 13th.
And our meeting's the 18th? So could we get it on that July 18th agenda?
No. By the time they meet and turn around a staff report and a resolution into the city attorney and staff, no. We could do it by the meeting in August if they make that decision, which is the second meeting in August.
But then we're already headed back to school.
Correct.
Correct.
So I'm going to move it up earlier to the next meeting, our next meeting, if somebody wants to add this on, because I don't want the kids to miss summer.
When's our next meeting?
18th of July.
July 18th. So in effect, we would just not present this issue, well, you could still have the GAB discuss it, but you would just take action without them having deliberated on it.
Yeah, they can discuss it and come to the meeting.
Yeah.
And they can talk to us then as part of the presentation.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
If anybody wants to, "Mr. Mayor, could you help me put that on the agenda?"
Is there a second to that motion?
Let me point a clarification, they meaning the Golf Advisory Board?
Yes.
So procedurally, what's going to happen is that this issue will go before the Golf Advisory Board on the 16th?
The 13th.
The 13th, I'm sorry.
13th.
And then the Golf Advisory Board, at least the Chair or some members, will be present at the City Council meeting on the 18th to brief us on their proceedings on the 13th?
Yes.
Sure, we could ask them to be here, I couldn't require someone to be here, but we would ask them that you would like to hear their results and conclusions from any deliberation they've had time to do.
I'll second that.
So do you want us to actually bring the amendment to the policy on the 18th and have that all prepared? Okay.
Please. Thank you.
In understanding I will not be here on the 18th of July.
We'll still have a quorum, though, right?
Any other comments? Okay. You have direction, Mr. City Manager? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tom. And our next speaker?
Thank you, Council.
Whitney, if you would please, to be followed by Chris Plavani, please.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who came to support, basically, the programs, the momentum that we've come so far with these programs. Members of the City Council and the mayor, good evening. While working with the Video Services, we've had several amazing opportunities to promote the City of Fairfield, its employees, and its residents. The easiest way I convey this to you is through our stats. Since I joined this department three years ago, we have created and produced close to 300 videos, including 13 videos to inform our citizens about Measure P, 20 videos to promote our city's real estate, attractions, and businesses, and close to 40 videos promoting city services. We have increased our social media by 130%, and our video about Peabody Road had several thousand views, the highest number of views to date on our city's Facebook. We have won a total of 16 awards, including the highest award for excellence in government programming in California and Nevada, all while completing work for external agencies resulting in additional $30,000 of revenue paid to the city. While all of this is an accurate reflection of the work ethic and enthusiasm of our department, I believe that our most important work to date has been the relationship we've built with both the Multimedia Academy at Armio High School and the Sports Broadcasting Program at Solano Community College. At the high school, we currently serve on the Advisory Board, provide mentorship to approximately 180 students, work with the interns to provide hands-on training and access to modern production equipment, and continue to work with the academy to upgrade their technology while making the most out of the equipment they have on hand. We also implemented a video project highlighting outstanding local students and staff called "I Have a Dream," and you can see any of these videos on our YouTube channel, FFCA TV. At Solano Community College, we have watched a studio emerge from the '70s and have brought it into 2017 with the addition of new cameras, a new tricaster, new audio equipment, new curtains, a green screen, new lights, et cetera. We have watched the sports broadcasting program grow and flourish under the enthusiastic guidance of their professor and have worked with him to provide current technology necessary for the kids to have a real shot at a job in the industry once they leave the program. We have also worked with students by providing in-class training on equipment and software as well as on-camera experience. I tell you all this not because we normally want to walk around talking to everybody about what we do, but because the reason we do it is for our youth and our community as a whole. Our work is far from over, and I do feel that it is crucial that we maintain the relationships that we've established for their sake and for the betterment of our school system and overall community. As you can see, I've asked a few people who work in this program to come and speak about their experience, and I hope that after you hear what they have to say, that you will vote to make our department whole again and continue to support us as we work to support the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Whitney. Chris Plavani, to be followed by Orlando Torres, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Chris Plavani. I am the Multimedia Academy Coordinator at Armio High School right down the road. And I just wanted to thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak. I'm the one that wrote you all the email last night, and thank you for getting back to me, I really appreciate it. I need you to understand how important this is, okay? So in San Francisco, the Bay Area, there's lots of multimedia partners, right? There's Skywalker Sound, like, they got all the goodies down there. Even in Sacramento, there, K-CRA, they've got tons of partners there. In between, this is it, okay? Channel 26 is vital. So I want you to understand that our grant comes from the state. We're a California Partnership Academy, okay? We get about $75,000 every year from the state. But there's a lot of checkmarks that we have to do, go through throughout the course of the year in order to spend that money and get the grant for the following year. And one of them is that our district has to match dollar for dollar, but also another one of those checkmarks, a very important one, is that our community has to match dollar for dollar. And that's where I come in, that's my job, is to go out and meet people in the community and have them donate their time. And can you imagine how long that list is of an hour here and an hour there of getting everyone to add up to $75,000, okay? The people at Channel 26 are vital in that role. We had thousands of dollars of equipment when I came in, I took over the program, and none of it worked right because the people that were running it before me, they didn't have the expertise of, this cable goes into that, makes this component work. And Bill and Whitney came in, volunteered their time, and said, you know, "This is what you need to make it work." And without them, we would just, we'd all just be students with camcorders, okay? Just, you know, it's a start, but they take us to the next level. We are trying to build a multimedia family, a multimedia community in the district, okay? We're working with bringing Fairfield and Rodriguez up, and I'm able to coach them to tell them exactly what they need to do in order to build their programs because of Bill and Whitney at Channel 26. They also provide mentorship. So she was talking about the "I Have a Dream" documentaries, that's what our students do at the junior level. They produce it, takes them about six weeks. They give the video over, they watch it, and we put it in their Dropbox, they send emails back, and they say, you know, "Here's what you should do to fix it, make it look more professional," okay? They also work with our interns, okay? Without them, where would our interns go, okay? With even just the halftime reduction, of course, you guys are talking about doing, it's, that's going to be half the time they're going to be able to spend with our interns. We're very proud of our interns, all right? So I know I still have some time left, but I wanted to use some of my time to answer any questions that you might have about how important this is to us.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Plavani?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And our next speaker will be Orlando Torres, please. To be followed by Margaret Manzo.
Hello, members of the Council, Mayor Price. I'm here to talk about the Local Access, and I wanted to let you all know the importance of the internship program as well as the collaboration between Armio High School's multimedia program and Solano College Broadcasting. I am a product of being an intern from the Local Access, and I recently graduated with a BA in cinema at San Francisco State University. And without the support from Channel 26, I don't think I would be here right now because the art isn't a supported major, and to have someone who can believe in you against the odds that I may not be as skilled with math or with science to excel in any engineering profession, but because I got the access to see this professional production crew and to see the process of it developing into something more advanced has been remarkable. As I come back to my high school to see how they're doing, their equipment has advanced, their education has advanced in the production, as well as my community college, and you would think that at a state school, they would be even more advanced as the students who are attending there to be well-informed with the production and the process of what it takes to become part of the media. And I was surprised that a lot of people were just starting out, and a lot of people here in our community college and in our high school are being educated and being able to handle professional equipment already used in the professional world that us as state students have to wait till our senior year, which is at the very end, which had me surprised. And it makes me feel that I was really fortunate to be a part of the Solano Broadcasting, the San Francisco, Fairfield-Channel 26 internship, and the Armio High School program, all simultaneous, that I would expect more kids to have been able to follow my footsteps. But it seems like I didn't think that I was going to be here right now in order to help keep this going and keep it growing. Like the old expression, Rome wasn't built in a day. And so if we continue to progress with this system that's going on, we can have more people just like me and more people majoring in the media field, because right now, the media is a sense of the place we go to in order to deliver or receive information, and it's only growing. And if we cut that, then we are limiting our students to be able to develop in that field. Thank you.
Congratulations, Orlando. It's been a joy watching you go from high school, completing college, and the very bright, promising career you have ahead of you. Thank you, you're an inspiration. And our next speaker will be Margaret Manzo, to be followed by Joe Summers, please.
Good evening, everybody. Margaret Manzo, Executive Director, Fairfield Main Street Association. We're gearing up for this year's Independence Day Parade on Tuesday, July 4th. Well, what would I say, a parade wouldn't be a parade without Whitney and Channel 26. I mean, really, we're so reliant for our events to get the coverage from our local cable access and one-on-one interviews that they do so magnificently and edit so beautifully, and they actually make me sound coherent. So thank you. So I just have to give a shout-out to our friends at Channel 26, and we got to have Whitney, you guys, come on. We got to have Whitney. Anyway, also, my son, who is now a filmmaker in Los Angeles, actually went through the Solano College program. So he's working for Lifetime Movies as a director of photography, so yay, go Solano. But back to the parade. This year's theme of the parade is, let's see, what is it? I'm sorry, Sweetland of Liberty. And our grand marshal is our very own Gary Falati. And so we really encourage everybody to come out and enjoy. It's Tuesday, July 4th, 10:00 AM. Hopefully, everybody's in town, we'll see all of you, and we'll see all of you. And today is the parade deadline, so I'll be standing in the lobby collecting your entry forms, or just come in late, we're okay with that. Thanks, everybody. I mean tomorrow, late, not next week. Thanks.
Thank you, Margaret. Joe Summers, please.
Mayor, Council members, I came up here to speak in support of Whitney and Channel 26. I, too, like Mr. Torres over here, was a graduate of the Multimedia Program through the Armio High School. He summed it up more beautifully than I could ever do it, so I'm not even going to try. But I was there before the program actually did have these partnerships with the Channel 6, Channel 26, and with Ms. Whitney over here. But I followed the program ever since I graduated. I think that it's a wonderful program that was expanded, and it gives a lot of students the opportunity to get a more in-depth knowledge than I even got through the program. I did not go in the field of video and multimedia, but it has helped me in my job and in my career. I think it's a wonderful program. It's only gotten better, and to cut the funding on this is a big step back. It's only gotten better, and to cut the funding on this is a big step back, and I hope that you reconsider your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. And we turn now to, I don't have any other request to speak cards. We turn now to the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you would, please. I will convene the meeting of the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District, and we just have the one item, Madam Clerk, item number three.
Okay. Public hearing and resolution, PV-MMD 2017-02 of the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District Board approving the 2017-2018 supplement to Engineers' Report and ordering the levy of assessment for the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District.
And our presenter is Thomas Marshon, please. Thomas?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the board. Tonight, we're going to be talking a little bit about the Paradise Valley Monitoring District. With this district, we actually are involved with monitoring the inspection, the funding of any issues that develop with geological hazards, as well as any type of inspections with monitoring the site and ongoing. Tonight, in front of you is actually the adoption of a resolution that will approve the supplement to the Engineers' Reports and then containing the assessments. By conducting a public hearing, you fulfill the final steps regards to approving those assessments, so we can continue on with the 16, 17, or 17 and 18 assessments for that year to continue the funding of the district. That's my final comments.
Thank you, Thomas. Any comments or questions for Thomas before I open the public hearing? I will open the public hearing, have no request to speak cards on this item. Anyone choosing to speak should do so now. Saying done, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. Is there a motion then to approve resolution, PV-MMD 2017-02? It's been moved by Councilman Bertoni, seconded by Councilman Moy. All in favor? Motion carried, thank you very much. And I will now reconvene the meeting of the City Council. Consent calendar again, please, Madam Clerk.
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item.
Colleagues, I do have some requests to speak cards, and then there's a disclosure we have to make also. Some of us are ineligible to vote on some of these topics, and I'll go through those with you. Our first speaker will be Jeff Roberts, please. Jeff? Item number 10. And he'll be followed by Ryan Wood.
Thank you very much. I'm here to discuss the micro-surfacing project that is recommended for award to asphalt paving systems. VSS has performed this work for the last four years for the city of Fairfield, and with all due respect to staff whom we have a lot of respect for, we would like you to consider not adopting the resolution and reconsider awarding to the second bidder. We feel that APS's bid alternate schedule was manipulated to make their bid price look artificially low. And if you look at our bid price, plus the alternates, although we were $10,000 higher than APS, we were $170,000 lower overall, which would have allowed you to do all of the alternate work, which staff has subsequently recommended be put off till next year. We're also questioning the low bidders' attempt to broker pretty much the entire project. This is a 70-day contract. The apparent low bidder's interest in this is seven days of chip seal. They have subcontracted out approximately 20 days of micro-surfacing work, so that puts them performing roughly 25% of the work themselves. And I think if you really look at the reality of that, that's kind of shocking. As a matter of fact, their subcontractors are here tonight because they are the primary stakeholders, you know, in this award process. Should you not be able to reconsider awarding to the second bidder, we would like you to, you know, consider throwing all bids out and rebidding. And, you know, one of the important things here, again, with all due respect to staff, we feel that, you know, the comments that if all bids are rejected, it would not allow this work to be performed during the construction season is incorrect. This is a 70-day contract. Striping, final striping in this market takes place in the end of November, into early December routinely for this type of work. That means the notice to proceed could start as late as Labor Day, and this work would still be performed on time and within schedule. These are surface treatments. There's no pending safety issues. As noted in staff report, this type of process is a maintenance process, and, you know, the implication that much-needed maintenance, you know, may not be performed, we don't feel is really the issue, is exhibited by the fact that the alternate portion is being pushed off till next year anyway, due to the fact that the apparent low bidder's alternate pricing was way out of line. Another reason for this is we feel like the protest process itself, the protocol was not followed correctly. We, when we submitted our protest letter, we did copy all the parties per the requirements of the contract. However, we did not get a copy of APS's response letter until after close of business last night, which was roughly 24 hours ago. And this was a letter that was dated May 22nd. And we feel like, number one...
Mr. Roberts, would you conclude, please?
Yes, sir. And so, should you rebid the project, I think you'll see either more competitive bid pricing or you will be allowed to do your alternative work, as was the intent of our bid. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, you had a question for the speaker?
No, not for the speaker, but, well, probably Tom or George Hicks, but on the alternative bid. Thank you. So, if I understand this, we were very specific in what we wanted done, but in the alternative bid, now we're getting into different areas because there is such a big price discrepancy. Help me out with that.
Sure, sure. So, we put out a contract with a base bid and an additive alternate. We often do that based on budgeting to make sure we can hit the budget. So, as we put this out, the directions in the bid package said that the basis of bid is for the base bid. It's very specific. The low bidder for the base bid wins the bid. So, we did that. The low bid was APS. When we looked at the alternative bid items, the add-alt, the prices were high, and we looked at it and thought, there's a better value, there's better value to be had if we delay that work until next year. The base contract was very good pricing, very competitive pricing, right on the Engineers' estimate, but that additive work wasn't a good value for the city, and we can't recommend awarding that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Moy?
So, the gentleman who just spoke said that his additional work was only an extra $10,000. Does that ring true with you?
So, the difference, it's about a $1.8 million contract, and the difference between the two base bid prices was $10,000. It was an extremely tight bid. The additive work, VSS, the gentleman that just spoke, their additive work was less expensive than APS. But that does not matter. It's the basis of bid within the bid documents is the base bid. It doesn't change. It really doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I wish I was a PE or something, but, so, are we going to do the add-alternative work?
So, we are recommending to not award the additive alternate work this year. It is adjacent to the work that we plan to do next year, so the good news is, we can put it into the next year's contract that we were planning to do anyway. We do not expect to see an increase in mobilization because it's adjacent work, so we think that that's the best value, the best way to proceed with this contract.
Would it be as quoted here, $174,000 versus the $352,000, or is that, you don't really know what it's going to be in a year?
We don't know what it'll be in the next year. We do plan to put it out with the base bid because of the budget we have allocated next year, we plan to have allocated. So, we plan to put that all in the base bid, so it all will be competitively priced together.
Okay.
So, we do expect it to be more competitive.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertoni, please.
And I'm going to ask the layman's question for the evening, because I know very little about construction. I'm a patent lawyer. It sounds like the speaker referenced the potential manipulation of information in the winning bid that will ultimately be detrimental to the city because we're not going to be getting what's represented in that bid. Do I have that correct?
I believe that's what he said, but that is not...
Okay, that concerns me, but you're the expert, not me. So, can you tell us why the information is a clear and accurate representation of what you voted on in terms of awarding the bid?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we expected this item to come up. I actually have some slides put together because it really gets into numbers, and it's easier to look at numbers than it is to talk about numbers sometimes. So, I'll skip through.
And please remember, you're talking to novice here, so help me out.
Sure, sure. Okay. There it is. Okay, so, let me go to the specific.
Before you start, let me just ask. So, what you're going to present here is going to address precisely what I'm asking in my question to the best of my ability in terms of the alleged misrepresentations in the bidding materials?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting straight to the numbers. So, there was a numerical error in the bid documents, which isn't actually unusual. I mean, I think people are surprised. When we check bids, often there are math errors. It's so common that there's actually provisions in the contract, within the special provisions, that say, how do you evaluate errors in the math? Because, again, it's so prominent.
Before you move on, can I ask you, whose bid is this?
This is the low bid, APS, that the last gentleman had said was manipulated, so I was going to go straight to their bid.
Gotcha.
So, there is five schedules within the bid. The blue on the left is the actual bid document itself. There is a math error at the very bottom, the subtotal. It should be $513,806. I have that on red on the right-hand side. So, you get that by following the rules that are in the specs. The specifications say that if there's an error, you take the quantity times the item price to get to the total for that line item. And then the addition of all those line items is your actual total. So, while there's a mistake here, when you use the rules, $513,806 is the number you use.
Let me ask you a question. Who discovered this mistake?
We did. As we were looking through the bid documents, it was very apparent, we check every number. VSS, I believe, also had a copy of this and also saw this.
So, the author of the bid didn't make the lower number, you did.
I'm sorry, no. All the scratch-out, let me go back. All the scratch-out, that is APS. We didn't touch anything on the blue sheet. It's often what bids look like. You'll get last-minute numbers, the contractor will scratch something out, and then scribble in the right numbers. So, the blue is unaltered. The right side with the red number, that is the corrected number that our staff did the addition for, the multiplication for. So, there's one more piece. As we go into the addition of all the subcategories, it adds up to $1,834,415. So, that's with the corrected $513,000 that I've circled. That's also the bid that was submitted by APS. Their intention was the $1.8 million. All of the numbers check when you correct their mistake. So, there really isn't, the intent is clear with this bid.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Go to our next speaker then, please. Ryan Wood, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Councilor of VSS International. We've submitted some written materials which staff has commented on, and I'm sure you've all had a chance to look at. I'm here to just put a little emphasis on some of those points and also respond to some of the comments made by staff. I just heard, I'm sorry, your name? Julie, I just heard Julie say a moment ago that, once they corrected the mistake in the bid, then they could understand the intent of APS. That's a significant problem, because under the law, the law is very, very clear when it comes to irregularities in a bid. There is such a thing as inconsequential irregularity, which can be waived by a city, and those are things that don't affect price. And then there are things that are material irregularities, which inherently are built into the price in some fashion that affect the price of the bid. Now, I understand the specifications have some mechanism to interpret numbers, but the city cannot, as a matter of law, cannot waive a material irregularity. You have internally inconsistent numbers in their bid. Now, I understand that staff has attempted to correct the mistake, but the city can't correct the mistake in the bid. You can't do that. That is an attempt to fix a material irregularity. And the unfortunate thing is, this invites litigation. This is the kind of thing where, you know, it would have to be evaluated by a court under administrative mandamus. Now, staff has made comments that they're concerned about getting the timing of this project going in order to get the work done. Mr. Roberts says that the work can be done this year if it's put out to rebid. If this goes before administrative mandamus, your city attorney will tell you, that's at least 180 days to put together the administrative record before you can even get to a trial on the merits. So, you know, I'm concerned that this is, the best move here is either to award to VSS as the lowest responsive bidder, or if the city's so inclined, at least reject all bids, get this out to rebid, and then, as Mr. Roberts said, we can get this work done this Those are my main points. I don't want to rehash over some of the smaller points in some of my letters.
Councilwoman Vicario?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is for our city attorney, since you brought up a lot of legal issues, okay? So, Greg, can you answer some of the...
I can. Actually, had Mike Estrada, who's our constructional expert, take a look at the bid protests, and he regularly reviews bid protests that are received in the city here. And his conclusion was that this was a waivable error, because it did not affect the final numbers that were bid on, which is approximately $1.8 million. So, the error here was, as Julie pointed out, was in a subtotal, but when you add up the actual unit prices by the quantities, it comes to the correct price that was part of the final bid. So, again, if there was an irregularity that affected the final bid amount, you know, we would have been concerned about that, but in fact, when you walk through the numbers here, it does lead you correctly to the final bid number, which is the contractor's going to be bound by. If this was a situation where the error here could have allowed the contractor to pull out their bid, we would have had a different situation, but our conclusion here was that they were bound, and they are bound by the bid they made, which would be the bid of $1.834 million. So, again, you have a choice tonight. You can, again, you could, if you wanted to, say, oh, no, you know, we're not going to waive this one irregularity on the schedule, and you could award it to VSS, but we also feel that we're on legally solid grounds to waive this particular irregularity and award the bid to the actual lowest bidder of the bidders that have submitted bids on this project.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Moy?
Mr. City Attorney? So, is your position that this is not a material irregularity, or that the irregularity, whether it's material or not, doesn't matter?
No, it's, well, it's not a material irregularity, and so, and this is waivable. And there's a lot of case law in this area as to what is a waivable or not-wavable irregularity. We have had cases where we have concluded that the error was not waivable. In those cases, we've had to reject, we usually then those cases have reject all the bids or we go to the second lowest bidder. So, we've been in that situation before. This is one case where we think you could waive it. You don't have to, that's your ultimate choice. It is true, if there was litigation brought on this, this would delay the award of the contract. I mean, we've had a lot of bids protests that we have rejected, where we've never had any litigation to date since I've been city attorney on a bid protest. I don't want to jinx anything here. That would be left up to the contractors, whether or not they would file a writ in this case. But again, we do feel that there is a legally sufficient basis here to waive this particular irregularity.
Councilwoman Bertoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, so, am I understanding you correctly in saying that the irregularity in the subtotal is material or...
No, it's immaterial, because it doesn't...
The irregularity in the subtotal is immaterial?
Right, but it doesn't affect, does not affect the ultimate price for...
Right, it doesn't affect, does not affect the ultimate price, which is what the price will be, that the contract will be bound by. And it is verified by calculation under each of the unit prices under Schedule B. So, it doesn't, it doesn't have any contract specifications of unit prices, it would be fully based on a, of an error in calculation.
So even the five, so even though the $513,806, even though that number was, that number was corrected, that correction or irregularity is immaterial according to current case law?
In our opinion, because again, we can, we get to that number by, in fact, basing it upon the unit prices that are shown in Schedule B. So it's not as if staff had to try to, try to make assumptions as to what was being bid here. If you do the calculation of each line of unit, of unit pricing, you get to the 534, I'm sorry, $513,806.
Okay, just indulge me with one more question.
Sure.
Let me drill down one more time. So I understand you're saying, the fact that the base bid, the bottom-line number, 1.834 million dollars, did not change because of the correction, that makes this a waivable irregularity?
That is, that is correct.
That's correct?
Yes.
Now, is there any case law that shows where there is an irregularity in a subtotal, in a subtotal number, like the 513,000, that was actually corrected? Is there any case law to show that a change, an irregularity in a subtotal is not waivable, or is material?
You know, I can't answer that, you know-
That's an important question.
Well, the only thing is this, I have to be honest with you, I do need to rely upon, you know, an expert in my firm, who knows all these cases, because, you know, I have not reviewed the case law in this area. And Mike Estrada has done this for probably 30 years, and I, again, it was Mike's review with staff, and he's very knowledgeable with the case law here, that this was a case where the error in the subunit price could be waived. So, and that's, that's based on evaluation of the case law that, you know, that he is familiar with.
The error in the subunit, in the 513-
It'd be the Schedule, yeah, Schedule B.
Can be waived.
That can be waived. And again, it's just-
That answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood, you still have a couple of minutes. Did you want to continue?
Uh, no, I've made my points.
Okay.
Other than, when I spoke with the city attorney's partner on this, our initial conversation, and by the way, very professional, you guys have a professional staff, I really enjoyed working with him. My first conversation with him, he was, he was on the fence himself. He wasn't entirely sure what the conclusion was. Ultimately, he did make the conclusion that he made, but this was not a slam dunk by any means, the first time I spoke with him. So I think, all around, I think we can, we can agree, that this certainly is pretty messy, and certainly ambiguous as to what the law's gonna do with it. I tend to think that the court would uphold our side of the position, but that's just my, my initial thing.
Okay, we have one more speaker yet. You want, if Mr. Wood, yes. Councilwoman Moy?
Thank you, sir. Sorry to put you through this. My question is, is this the only kind of law that you practice? Is this your specialty?
This is the bulk of what I do. About 95% of my work is public works contracting.
Public works contracting?
From the, from the private sector side.
Are you a litigator?
Yes, I'm a trial lawyer.
Trial lawyer?
Yeah.
Hmm, are you gonna sue us?
Unfortunately, I hate to say it out loud, but I've been given the authority to file a writ.
You have?
Yes.
Thanks for answering my question honestly.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Our final speaker will be John Gladich, please.
Mr. Mayor, staff members of council. My name is John Gladich, and I am a construction attorney. It's all that I do. When you come in second on a close bid, you make all kinds of noise, and you look for anything that you can. And you come into council chambers, and you know darn well that the rules that they had to follow, everyone had to follow, is that you filled out the item price, if the blue sheet were up, and the total price. And you know, because it says right in what comes out from council, comes out from the city, that you bid, those are the numbers that matter. This is not a math test. If this number, instead of being correctly added up of these totals to 513, were 413, or it was 512 on the subtotal, you know as a bidder, that doesn't matter. This is not a math test. But when you come in second, you bring, you write, as you can, if you were to look, you write in, you have your owner come, who comes in second, write a bid protest letter, and then if city attorneys and their staff, and they look at it very closely, because of threats of lawsuits, and they do the right thing for the cities, and they say, look, it doesn't matter. And how many different ways you ask, that it is not a math test. What matters is what you filled in the unit prices. And that's what my client, who is your low, successful bidder, did. They filled in, they made a mathematical error, but again, it's not an error that matters, because you told everybody, including VSSI, that it didn't. The correct math is there, we stand by our price. But then what you do, after you write a letter in May complaining, and your city staff goes to their experts, and they go to others and review it very carefully, because they don't want suits, you then go to lawyers like me, or prior council, to come in if you're second, and you come to city council meetings, and you make noise, and you make threats about following writs, so that people have to turn and ask, are you gonna sue us? I guarantee you this, and I'll guarantee you, when you have a clear specification, and you haven't been pointed out that there wasn't a clear spec, that makes it very clear to everybody, that it's the total price carried from the item that matters, you'd have heard about that. And council would've brought that up, and the owners would've brought that up. You wouldn't have heard about alternates, and what can happen, even though it's not in your budget, and you're gonna issue it later. Lots of noise is what I heard, around the very simple fact that the math is correct, my client stands by its price to you, wants to do the job, is extremely capable to do the job, and over very vehement objection, as you can see, even at your staff level, they looked at it very closely.
Mr. Gladich, would you conclude, please?
And, that's my point. So thank you, Mayor. They looked at it very closely, and they made the recommendation to you to stand up, do the right thing, and don't be scared away by bully tactics, because that's all you've seen.
Mr. Bert-
Yeah, yeah, sir, I have, I have a comment. We're gonna spend an hour's time talking on a 1.8 million dollar deal, when your client submits that, is that the original sheet they, they put into the city?
The original sheets as they-
1.8 million dollar deal, and they're scratching out in hen's scratch, right? Are you kidding me?
No, sir. You get that on 1.3 billion dollar deals, where there's last-minute scratching, that's how it looks.
So I, I get that, but then I guess, then we come here, and like I said, we're gonna spend an hour, over 10,000 bucks, and a bunch of staff time, and attorneys, do you think maybe you could tell them, hey guys, if you're gonna do this, don't be disappointed if somebody looks at you and says, what is this chicken scratch? Okay? That's, that's all I wanna say. I understand the math is correct, I understand, he says they're gonna sue or not sue, we need to move this forward. Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm ready to go. But sir, would you please pass along my frustration to them? Right? Just get it a racer.
I will tell everyone, if you were to look at other bids, you'd see even other chicken scratch.
I'm sure-
So, sir, it happens every single day, if there were a better way for people in the construction industry to get last-minute prices, and everyone's bidding against each other, because of low bidding, I would love it, because it makes my reading easy.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for hearing my frustration.
One final comment. Councilwoman Bertoni, please.
I like your confidence, sir, and so you're gonna happily join us as co-defendants, if we have to deal with an administrative mandamus or lawsuit, and help us vigorously defend.
Without a doubt, we will on this.
Wow.
No, with, because we have every interest in doing so, and we would be named in the suit as well.
Perfect, thank you, sir, that's a great answer.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Okay, I don't, don't have any other comments, and don't have any request to speak cards, or any other items, so before we take action, let me go through those of us who have conflicts. On item number seven-
I'm gonna stick on it, it's handed by itself.
Okay.
Yeah, then we can go back to the second.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so we'll take-
Yes, the item was one we just considered here, so there is a resolution before you, which would award the contract to APS. The question for you is whether or not you're gonna award the contract to what was the lowest bidder, or you would award it to the second lowest bidder, which is VSS, and that's your choice. The resolution right now is prepared, based on staff recommendation, which is that the contract is bid to the lowest bidder.
Okay, and this is item number 10?
Yes, this, right.
And it's Resolution 2017-141.
Yes, it is.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved by the vice mayor, is there a second, please?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilwoman Bertoni, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. And, and you're not voting on this one, okay? Now, we'll go back and we'll-
I'm sorry, did you not vote? Or you're at, oh, okay.
The consent counter, here we go. And Greg, you had the list, or the conflicts?
We do have conflicts on the assessment districts, but just gonna note, if a council member has a conflict, and this is on the consent counter, you can say, just to denote the record, and I, you're not voting in this district, because of having property interests, a ownership property in the area, subject to the assessment itself. We have on item number six, it'll be, Councilmember Carl will be abstaining. On item number seven, Councilmember Bertoni's gonna be abstaining. Item number eight, Mayor Weiss is abstaining.
This is Mike.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And on item number nine, it would be, Councilmember Moy will be abstaining. That'll be it.
With that in mind, is there a motion to approve? It's been moved by Councilwoman Moy, seconded by Councilwoman Vicarall, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We turn then to new business, public, public hearing, item number 18, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and resolution 2017-150 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the 2017-2018 supplement to Engineers' Report, confirming the boundaries and assessment and ordering the levy and collection of assessments, Smith Ranch Assessment District.
And on this item, Councilmember Carl has to abstain, and you will need to leave the room on, on this item, just for the one item only.
And our presenter, Tom Marshon, again, please, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Tom Marshon, Public Works Manager. The Smith Ranch Assessment District was formed to fund capital maintenance and improvements for streets and storm drain in Rancho Solano community. In front of you tonight is the adoption of the resolutions approving the supplement to the Engineers' Report, with the approved, with the assessments. There's an increase, there is no increase in this district, and by conducting a public hearing, you will complete the final step of the approval process, and set in the assessments for 2017 and 2018. That concludes my presentation, you have any comments, or I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Comments or questions for Thomas? Okay. I will open the public hearing, don't have any request to speak cards, anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now, seeing none, we'll close it, bring it back for council action. Is there a mo, it's been moved by the vice mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Moy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, 4-0. Thank you very much. We turn to item number 19, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and resolution 2017-151 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the 2017-2018 Engineers' Report, confirming the boundaries and ordering the levy and collection of assessments, and providing for notice of hearing thereof for Maintenance District Number 13, North Cordelia Hills.
And again, our presenter is Thomas Marshon.
And on this item, Council, Vice Mayor Tim has a conflict, he can just step out in the consideration of it.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Tom Marshon, Public Works Manager. The Maintenance District Cordelia was formed to provide funding services for the maintenance of the public landscaping, as well as lighting for the Green Valley area. In front of you tonight is the adoption of the resolutions approving the Engineers' Report with the annual assessments. There is no increase in assessments for this district. By conducting a public hearing, you will be completing the final steps in the approval process for the 1718 assessments. That concludes my presentation, you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Comments or questions for Thomas? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing, have, again, no request to speak cards, anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council action. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2017-151? It's been moved by Councilwoman Vicarall, seconded by Councilwoman Bertoni, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, 4-1, 4-0, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item number 20, please.
Public hearing and resolutions 2017-152 through 2017-162 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the 2017-2018 Engineers' Reports, confirming the boundaries and ordering the levy and collection of assessments, and providing for notice of hearings thereof for Maintenance District Number 1, Gateway, Number 3, Waterman Highlands, Number 6, Pepper Tree, Number 10, South Brook, Number 11, Paradise Valley North, Number 14, Wood Lake, Number 15, Gold Ridge, Number 16, Creekside at Cordelia, Number 17, Chadborn, Beck, Cordelia, Number 18, Gold Ridge Park, and Number 19, Sassoon Valley Road, Kaiser Hills.
And again, Thomas Marshon's our presenter, please.
Good evening again, Mayor and members of council, Tom Marshon, Public Works Inspector. There again, we're back into the maintenance districts, which is fairly, a number of them throughout the City of Fairfield. With that being said, we're here today to look at approving the assessments and the Engineers' Reports regards to setting the assessments for the 2017-2018 year. There is one increase in assessments, would be Paradise Valley area, and it was about $40 more, and that was due to operational expenses. But all other districts within the City of Fairfield has no other increases in this process. With that being said, by conducting a public hearing, there again, completing the final steps in the approval process will set the assessments for the 2017-2018 year. That conducts my presentation, you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Comments or questions for Thomas? I will open the public hearing, have no request to speak cards, anyone choosing to speak on this item should do so now, seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back for council action, please. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2017-152? It's been moved by Councilwoman Vicarall, seconded by the vice mayor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item number 21, please.
Public hearing and introduction of ordinance 2017-06 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, adopting revisions to Chapter 25, Article 1 of the Fairfield City Code, also known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairfield, to amend the definition of small recycling facilities, and to define a new land use, collection containers, and to adopt regulations for the ministerial approval of said collection containers.
And Brian Miller is our presenter, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight addresses the proliferation of collection containers in the City of Fairfield. I'm sure you're all aware of them, you've seen them, they're typically a metal box that designed to basically collect clothing, shoes, household goods, et cetera. These facilities are not manned, they're basically managed on an ongoing collection basis, and they, they basically are located in most of our, many of our commercial districts. We first tried to address these in 2015 with the zoning ordinance amendment, that required a conditional use permit, like we do for normal, small, manned recycling collection facilities. However, recent court cases over the last couple of years have challenged use permit requirements for these facilities under free speech rights. Based on that, and based on communication from attorneys representing one of the operators, we are proposing tonight a non-discretionary, in other words, ministerial permitting process for these facilities. That includes a new definition, and some key requirements. As I mentioned, this is a non-ministerial, this is a non-discretionary ministerial action. If you meet the standards, we will permit your facility. There are some fairly stringent requirements that we're proposing at this time. Property owner approval, we've heard from the community, that, from property owners in the community, that many of these, in some cases, these facilities just, these boxes just appear on the property. And if a property owner, for example, changes hands, it's often difficult for the new property owner to even get them removed, or even in some cases, to identify who really owns those boxes. Some of the boxes lack contact information, and clearly visible phone numbers, and operable websites, and, and people who are actually monitoring or answering the phone calls, or monitoring the websites at hand. There's also, we are also gonna require a management plan. In many cases, not in all cases, but in many cases, these collection boxes have become attractive nuisances. It's not necessarily the fault of the box operators themselves, but they're very- It's not necessarily the fault of the box operators themselves, but their very presence tends to collect accumulations of garbage, trash, household goods, et cetera, and unless the boxes are monitored on a very, very close basis, it's often hard to keep them clean and sanitary. Finally, we're recommending an annual permitting process that will allow the cities to monitor the situation with individual properties and individual operators. It's similar to what we already do, for example, for some of our temporary sign permits, our business licenses, et cetera, our annual taxes or annual permits on an ongoing basis. I will note that the new ordinance limits the locations primarily to our industrial and our service commercial or heavy commercial areas. That means that we're not necessarily looking to allow these to be continued to locate in existing commercial corridors like North Texas Street, or, and certainly not in residential areas. It does not affect, of course, boxes that are on properties owned by other government agencies, such as the school district, that's not, we don't necessarily have, we don't have zoning authority over school district property. However, commercial and other districts, we do have that zoning authority and we are limiting the location of them. I will also note that unpermitted containers are subject to code enforcement. The existing containers in the city don't have zoning approval, so they will be subject to code enforcement and removal in a certain timeframe that we're given in the ordinance. I can answer any questions, thank you.
Any comments or questions for Brian before I open the public hearing? Okay, thank you, Brian. I will open the public hearing and have two requests to speak cards, and our first speaker will be Debbie Tavy, to be followed by Margaret Manzo, please.
Good evening, Mayor Price, members of the Council. My name is Debbie Tavy, and I'm here representing the North Texas Business District and the Fairfield-Sassoon Chamber of Commerce. I am in support of the ordinance, number 2017-06, regulating the use of small recycling facilities and containers. These unauthorized containers have become a nuisance and are an eyesore to our business community and an added expense to our property owners. Many times, these containers are overflowing with items that have been dumped, mattresses, boxes, and other useless items, and they are hauled away at the expense of our property owners. Many of these containers are not permitted and block available parking intended for the use of businesses and consumers. We have recycling facilities in this city that follow the rules, pay permitting fees, and lease their space. We need to support their efforts. These facilities will be listed in the hand up, not hand out brochures, so you will know where to go for your recycling. By supporting ordinance 2017-6, we are investing in our property owners, business community, and giving the consumer a more desirable place to shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Manzo, to be followed by Alexander Bradley, please.
Good evening again, Margaret Manzo, Fairfield Main Street Association. For those of you who don't know, we're a major event producer in Fairfield, and we're huge fans of recycling, and we've managed to divert up to 80% of landfill waste since 2010 for our events. So we're strongly supporting recycling. In fact, we work very closely with Public Works, Astro Blanco, to host recycling events on the last Saturday of each month in downtown Fairfield at Empire and Texas Streets. There's places where you can bring your items, it's free, clothing, e-waste, confidential paper shredding. So I just want to begin by saying that we definitely support recycling. However, these random bins that are showing up all over town are not enhancing our beauty of our community in any way, and we strongly support this new ordinance and some sort of regulation. It's just turned into a dumping ground. You put one of these bins out, and next thing you know, there's a couch, and then there's a mattress, and then everybody decides this is where we're going to dump our stuff. So we've got to come up with a plan, and I couldn't agree more with Debbie in the fact that they're taking up parking spaces, and we know that parking is premium when it comes to downtown, so we strongly support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Alexander Bradley, to be followed by Buddy Cormitt, please.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I work for Recycle for Change, we're a local nonprofit out of Richmond, we are one of the operators in the city, probably the, one of the few, if not only, operators that has been in dialogue with the city about this ordinance. We care very deeply about what we do, recycling is basically our bread and butter, it is what we have set out to do. I work in, I've worked in the recycling industry for, let's see, since like 2009, and I've seen the ins and outs of it, and what people fail to understand is that unless recycling is convenient and easy, it does not happen. Right now, CalRecycle is reporting a third year of declining recycling rates, when we're trying to get to 75% in the state of California, so we're actually going backwards. And while I understand that there are complications with this industry, I urge you not to throw the baby out with the bathwater. What I can tell you from experience and seeing other cities pass similar ordinances is that it hurts the good actors that actually follow the rules and are engaged in finding ways to meet the city's needs. I work with Astro Blanco, reporting diversion rates every year, I also work with Don LeBarre, addressing any concerns about dumping, and we feel these issues too, it costs us money as well. As far as useless items, we recover mattresses, they're not going to landfill, and we incur that cost, and so I urge the city to understand that. What I, what I fear with this ordinance is that the zoning restrictions basically ban us from the city and the areas where these materials are produced, and so we won't be able to collect anything in industrial areas because that's not where people wear clothes, and that's not where people go to drop their items off, it's all about convenience. We'd like to see something that allows us to stay in the city and work with the city and help diversion rates stay up. We recycled over 230,000 pounds last year, so it's no small number, it's not a weekend pickup. Having these 24/7 really allows people to utilize the service. I just ask you to not punish the good actors. I live in Oakland, for example, where their ordinance was tantamount to a ban, and I can tell you that the dumping issues aren't resolved by removing boxes, they'll just get dumped on another corner or the same corner. So while I understand the frustration, I urge you not to punish us because of the people that are illegally dumping, dumping essentially. Thank you. Oh, and I brought some materials about our organization in a couple of letters, so if I could add those to the record.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Mr. Brady Cormitt.
Counsel, thank you for your time. My name is Buddy Gremm, and I represent Savers, and we operate a collection facilities. We're manned, so we are a little bit different, so we operate off of Texas Street. What we want to understand is, is we really appreciate you going after the ordinances because we do have a lot of flyby night people that go in and drop their boxes, and they're our eyesores. We man ours 24/7, or, excuse me, I like, seven days a week, okay, nine hours a day, we're there 363 days a year. We pay two people full-time, close to $14 an hour with benefits to be there, to accept within your community, and we work within the council, to come in and make sure your city is represented properly. We work with the landlords, we have leases, signed leases, signed agreements, we work with your city to make sure we're within the parking structures and everything else. We believe that you adopting an ordinance and getting people on the right track is the way to go, but understanding that only 15% of all textiles is what's represented and recycled right now. Your communities don't, remember, you used to get the phone calls and said, hey, we're going to be by your house, we're going to come by and pick up your stuff, have it on your doorstep. Communities don't want that anymore, they're fearful of people coming up their doorstep. So recycling is changing, and this is the way we're forward-thinking, trying to adopt to that and be manned, and so we really do appreciate, we do have a drop box outside of our attendance station for the overnight dumping, okay, so that does happen, we can't stop it. We, in some of our locations, we have nine locations around the area here, and we're hauling 1,000 pounds a night that's coming in after 7:00 and before 8:00 in the morning. It's being dumped at our sites, and we're doing that on our own expense, along with everything else. So it is a problem, but I think your adoption and where you're headed is right, and it's not the final step. I think that's the other thing, is, is as people start to register and you get the permitting under control, and you get the people who are committed to doing the right thing, we'll move forward in a very positive way. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I don't have any other request to speak cards on this item, anyone choosing to do so should come forward now, bring it back. Brian, you have final comments on, I'm going to close the public hearing.
No, I didn't have any further comments.
Any other comments or questions for Brian? Okay?
Yes, no, the other person.
No, okay. So I'll bring it back for council action, is there a motion then to adopt ordinance, the introduction of the ordinance 2017-06, been moved by Councilwoman Carl, seconded by Councilwoman Moy, all in favor?
Aye. And that motion does include also waiver, full reading of the ordinance and introduction?
Okay.
Thank you.
And approved by first reading only, okay? We're all set. We're going to take a five-minute break before we begin talking about budget, so.
[inaudible][63.42]
Part of his study earlier on. So, that basically is what's in the general fund budget, but there are unfunded, other unfunded needs here at the city. We have a lot of street maintenance that still needs to be addressed. Right now with the current budget, we'll have addressed about half of what we should be funding on an annual basis. So, we should be funding about thirteen million. We're funding about half of that. There's a lot of deferred main, building maintenance that we have. We'll be look, coming to council at a later date with the implementation plan for the heart of Fairfield, as well as implementation for the Allen Witt and Linear Trail Master Plan project. Something we've had of our financial system for over twenty years, and it is in need of replacement, and so it's obviously still on the list. Pensions, we'll talk about a little bit more, a little bit later in the presentation. And then the, the general plan has not been updated a number of years and badly needs to be updated. And the estimated cost of that is at least between two to three million. So, this is the eight-year forecast I was talking about for the general fund. As you can see, for seventeen eighteen, it's a balanced budget. It actually, the fund balance is increasing slightly with what we have proposed, but the deficits do start beginning in fiscal year eighteen nineteen through twenty-four, twenty-five. The key driver in that is basically the increase in pension costs as a result of CalPERS lowering their, their basically rate of return on investments from seven and a half percent beginning in eighteen nineteen down to seven percent by twenty-four, twenty-five. So, on average for the next several years, between eighteen nineteen and twenty-one, twenty-two, or twenty-two, twenty-three, it increases by about two million dollars a year just because of pensions. I've talked about most of the assumptions in there. A couple of things, additional things I will mention. It does assume that development for seventeen eighteen will continue at a similar pace as our current year right now, and it doesn't assume any recession other than what I've talked about with basically auto sales flattening, or actually declining somewhat. Staffing, so our staffing, we're proposing a total staffing level of five hundred and forty-eight employees for fiscal year seventeen eighteen with a slight increase to eighteen nineteen. The staffing, the changes are designed to address community need and workload to ensure that existing services are delivered effectively. So, they're focused in a few different areas. Human resources, we're, and this is one of the top ten items in the council work plan that was previously adopted. We're looking to add basically about two and a half positions, an increase in allocation for the office assistant, an administrative technician, and human resources analyst senior. And then in eighteen nineteen, we're also looking to add another administrative technician and human resources analyst. So, the additions will help the department basically better support the organization. So, for police, they're looking to add a case manager and two crime scene investigators. The case manager is largely funded by a grant, and the cost of the two crime scene investigators are being offset by the elimination of a vacant police ID tech and a vacant supervisor of crime investigators. The case manager will provide additional support for the city's homelessness intervention team, and the crime scene investigators will help to solve crime within the city. Public works will add two utility workers to be dedicated to quality of life, life issues such as debris pickup, illegal dumping, graffiti abatement, and abandoned shopping carts. In addition, they're looking, proposing to add one transportation planner, which is, would be funding with TDA revenues, to focus on federal compliance and other Title VI compliance. The budget also includes a full-year staffing of the six additional positions funded by the fire department as a result of their SAFER grant. It's important to remember that SAFER grant expires in early twenty nineteen. But even with these additions, our staffing is still sixteen percent below the peak in basically two thousand seven, two thousand eight. Pensions. As we talked about earlier in May with council, our pension costs are going to be projected to increase significantly over the next basically ten-year period. You can see basically for the current year sixteen seventeen, our total pension cost, this is across all funds, is about eighteen million dollars. As a result, in the payments that we're projecting for the unfunded liability portion, that's expected to double basically by, to thirty-six million by the time you reach twenty-seven, twenty-eight. A very significant increase. So, we also, this year, we're projecting a surplus for the general fund and a small surplus for next year for the general fund. These are kind of consistent with what we've done in the past for council. We are proposing some uses for those one-time monies. What we had talked about in the May presentation to council regarding our pension costs was looking to potentially pre-fund our pension obligation bonds and to establish a pension trust. So, we're allocating four million of the dollars between sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen to basically help build up funds for that. What we've established in the financial policies in the city budget document, which is proposed, is to basically the, a long-term goal of setting aside twenty-one million dollars for basically, to help retire our pension obligation bonds from twenty-eleven and to look to basically reduce our, help offset the pension costs in the future. So, we're also looking to allocate some additional one-time monies for street maintenance, deferred public building maintenance, some technology upgrades. Part of, one of our key things is our closed-circuit TV cameras, which help police basically monitoring activity in the city. It's been underfunded for a significant amount of time, and this will help to basically in the replacement of those cameras. There's about a half a million for economic development. What that relates to is that we, the successor agency sold some properties earlier this year, and our policy has been whenever we sell properties from the successor agency to dedicate it in the future for economic development because we no longer have a redevelopment agency here at the city. And the last was a half a million for other quality-of-life programs. So, besides the general fund, we also obviously have some other major funds, which include the transit, water, and golf funds. Our transit fund, you can see, we've actually, for these funds for this year, we did something new. We actually did five-year forecasts for all of three of our major funds. So, and you can see on here, the revenues and expenditures do vary over the five years. This is because in the next couple of years, especially starting in eighteen nineteen, they're looking to replace pretty much mostly the entire bus fleet for the operations. This is anticipating that we'll be able to get additional revenues, basically grant revenues to fund those additional purchases. If we're not able to, we'll have to look to somehow adjust operations to fund replacement of those buses. In the water fund, so the water fund, the, we did have a drop in revenues the last couple of years because of the drought. It's picked back up somewhat, but we're anticipating just because people have adjusted their uses, it likely will not pick back up to the pre-drought levels that it was before. And we're going to be coming back to council in the next couple of months to kind of give a more detailed financial update of the water fund. A couple of key things I want to really point out about the water fund. The working capital that we have proposed over the next five years is proposed to drop dramatically because we're looking to basically use our one-time bond reserves to pay for, for example, the east-west transmission line project and replacement of water mains. And so, that's a big issue that we need to address going forward in the future. The other thing is the numbers in red. Basically, we have to have under our debt covenants a certain level of coverage in the water fund to make sure we're in compliance with our debt issues. And you can see by actually twenty twenty-one, we're projected to fall below those levels. So, we'll be coming back to council again in the next couple of months to kind of give you a more detailed financial update and some recommendations on steps to take going forward. The golf fund, the golf fund, we're projecting to basically pretty much break even over the next couple of years. The nice-
Fred, if you could stop just a second, please.
Oh, sure.
Councilman Moy?
Yeah, I know you're, you're trying to move fast because we have the timer on you. You're past the fifteen minutes. But what I wanted to ask seriously is why are you projecting that to go down to a hundred and nine? Who's projecting it, and where are you getting those numbers?
Well, I'm sorry, which, that we're-
In twenty twenty-one, when you have us as a hundred and nine percent-
Uh-huh.
-in the red-
Right.
-with connection fees, and so I'm wondering, how, how, tell me how you're getting those numbers.
So, what, the key thing on this is we're basically, we can't, obviously, the last rate increase we had was in sixteen seventeen. We can't assume any rate increases unless council approves rate increases. So, what's happening, you can see on the top, the revenues are basically not changing at all. One of the other concerns we have on revenues, the state's been implementing additional mandates regarding conservation, and that's likely going to result in us getting reduced revenues going forward in the future, so. And so, that affects the coverage ratios. Yeah. And the capital improvement program, oh, the golf fund, I was just going to say, basically, we're projecting to bake, break even. The biggest thing on this is the good news is starting in nineteen twenty, our debt service basically pretty much drops more in half. So, we will no longer need any additional transfers from the loan fund to fund the golf operation. So, that's actually a good piece of news for the golf fund. The capital improvement program, it's a pretty active program for the next couple of years. It's about a hundred million dollars. The largest part is in streets and water. Those are about almost, about sixty percent of the total. And so, these are kind of a couple of the ma, the major projects for the next couple of years. There's a big focus on pavement maintenance, completion of the Fairfield Raccoonville Train Station. I talked before about the transit bus replacement. I talked before about basically infrastructure maintenance, the completion of the fire training tower, some improvements at a couple of our community parks, continued investment in our sewer mains, continued investment according to our vehicle replacement policy on ve, on our vehicles in police, fire, and public works. Water, again, continued investment in our high-quality water system. The information technology, the biggest thing, we have a radio communication system that's no, will no longer be supported as of twenty eighteen. This is the initial estimated cost for replacement of that system. The key thing, that system provides interoperability between all of our cities, and it's a really important base for public works, police, and fire in their daily communication and in providing mutual aid as well, too. So, basically, these are just kind of summary of the key trends we have at the city. Our population growth, like I said, has been a little bit above the average, which has helped us a lot as we've moved through the budget during the last few years. Taxes per capita, even with Measure P, we're actually below the average on that. The good news on, a lot of cities are facing huge OPEB and retiree health liabilities. Ours is very small, and it's actually a closed plan, so nobody can actually join it as additional can join it at this point. Our pension costs have gone up significantly over time. We've had very steady and consistent residential development, which has helped us a lot financially. And then the last point is, we've had a very low industrial rate, which is great for Fairfield, but we do have relatively high office vacancies. In the summary, general fund basically reflects a balanced budget for seventeen eighteen, minimal changes on staffing. It meets the twenty percent reserve level over both of the next two years, and it reflects commitment to public safety, the city council work plan, and Measure P. The other funds basically include the large capital improvement program that I talked about earlier, but there's a lot of work still needed in the future on funding infrastructure and other liabilities. And basically, we're recommending the council adopt the following resolutions related to the budget, including some proposed changes of, basically a restructuring of the parking rec, fee schedule, and some relatively minor changes for police, along with these other resolutions. And at this point, I'd be happy to address any resolutions. I think I hit my twenty minutes, so.
Any other comments or, any other comments or questions for Fred before we move on?
I just want to say job well done. And, 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 I mean, seriously, just the timing and everything is one thing, but the scope and quality of your work has exceeded itself once again. Very nice job.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Fred?
Oh, is there any questions or?
Any comments or questions?
No, not, not with them, just a discussion amongst yourselves.
Yeah.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you.
And very presentable, too. Easy to read, easy to follow.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it. We like, we like good pictures, so. It reflects the city really well, so.
Mr. Vice Mayor, here we go.
Here we go. What, what Cap Moy said, Fred, was, was right on. It was easy to read. We've been over this now many, many times. You know, we have to be prudent, but, you know, police, fire, I guess it takes money to make money, or to keep from spending a whole bunch of money. And I'm in, I'm in complete agreement with his budget. I'd like to see, obviously, if we could spend more, but, but we have to save. But one thing, and, and it was hit on earlier tonight, and we'll just, I just want to deal with it now. I've been contacted recently, I probably, we all have, over the, the AV audiovisual channel twenty-six, and especially dealing with Whitney. And, and the way it came about, I didn't know this because I hadn't gotten that far back in the budget book, but her job was due to terminate at the end of June, I believe, right? And it was pretty, I guess, transparent had we know where to look, but there's a saying, I don't, I didn't know what I don't know. So, it was brought to my attention, the, the instructor from ARMEO, I know the mayor was contacted from Solano College. And so, in looking at it, I got a, I got ahold of Mr. White, and, and I asked him about it, and I said, well, all these people are on board, why can't they perhaps share in, in the expense? And, and I'll, I'll let you talk to that in a minute, but, but what I would encourage my, my council colleagues to do is that, I think that it is important. I, I think it's important from a student position of where they go and, and, and how it works. I also think it's important for, for the city, I would encourage, were the vote to go the employees' way, which would be probably my way, is maybe we would look to expand some of the duties. I, I certainly understand. Channel twenty-six is something we don't ever think about. You see the red light, and you see them at parades, and I think it's just a given, but, but I would encourage a passage of this, of this budget with, with the adenum or the addition that, that we include from going a half-time back to a FTE, full-time FTE. And then I'd like David White to, to respond to. He actually stepped up, and, and he'll be probably kind of aw shucks, but I know that he, he reached out to people at Fairfield who soon unified, as, as well as the chancellor from Solano College, so. Mr. White?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple of things, I just want to sort of step back and walk through some of the history, so, and talk a little bit about the germination of this position, where it came from, because it comes from some core principles in terms of wanting to support staff and support growth, and definitely want to award or reward innovation. So, the first thing I want to clarify is that there's three members of our channel twenty-six team, Bill Way, Whitney Skilman, and Bill Hodgson, who is here every two weeks, very devoted, wonderful employee, and we appreciate him very much. So, in two thousand and fifteen, it was a treat to hear that Whitney was excited to step in and, and do some work in video, and clearly, she's a very gifted, skilled, no pun intended, and talented individual. And certainly, I have always tried to go above and beyond in terms of really recognizing their work. I think it distinguishes Fairfield from every other city in this county, and I think it distinguishes us from many other cities throughout the state, and the awards, I think, speak tremendous volumes to the work that's done. It's, it's top-notch. So, in two thousand and fifteen, in the budget, we actually added a, a limited-duration video technician position. We're very clear about it being limited duration. And the context for it was to have it do two things. One was to be part-time focused on video work, and then to spend part-time doing revenue-generating activities, particularly around business license collection, and also do some work assisting in the finance department. The revenue generation side unfortunately didn't bear fruit. So, as we were looking towards the budget for this upcoming year, we knew that we'd been clear about communicating with all of you that it was going to be disappearing. And so, obviously, as I previously stated, we value the work very much. So, instead of seeing going the position to zero in the budget, we proposed keeping the position at a half-time and adding it into the budget. So, one of the challenges that was faced in front of me was obviously understand clearly the impacts that that would have, and I will obviously say that the comments you heard in this room tonight were very accurate in terms of embracing the three members of our video team and embracing Whitney's skills. And so, what I was pleased to learn today was speaking with the superintendent of Solano Community College, is that the community college would be very interested in working with Whitney, and would see some great opportunity and potential for her at the college. And did that reach out because very understanding that this council cares deeply about employees, and also that we all want to make sure that people are in a safe place. So, that's the work that's been done today, and that's the position that's here. Should council move ahead and increase the position to a full-time allocated position? Just so we understand, it would be about a fifty-seven thousand dollar additional cost into the fiscal year seventeen eighteen budget.
Mr. City Manager, can you repeat that last sentence, please? Your last sentence.
The total cost of the position?
Correct, sir.
Fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to increase it to a full-time position. Good?
So, half-time position is half of fifty-seven thousand?
No, it's fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty. To increase it to a full-time position, it would be fifty-seven nine fifty times two.
Got you.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, were you? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I agree with the vice mayor. I, I think it's a position that's sorely needed. Of course, I'm a little biased, being a former principal at ARMEO, and Joe Summers spoke about the multimedia program there, and I, I've seen so many young people, like this gentleman right here, coming out of the school where I used to be principal. So, I think it's important, just, you know, there's so many things that go on to putting on these videos throughout the city. And I know having one, and, you know, one person and one person who's not full-time, and then another person who's half-time, to me, that's going to be a detriment to the entire program. And I think it's necessary that we do fund a program, a full program, that can really show, showcase, showcase the city of Fairfield. Because without that, we're not going to be able to show. I mean, I put on channel twenty-six all the time, you know? I mean, you get, you get bored watching a lot of other, of course, when Cats on, I kind of turn it off, but no, I'm just kidding. I'm just joking. But no, in all seriousness, though, I, I do turn it on a lot because there are some really good shows on there. So, I, I would concur with the vice mayor in that I feel that it should be funded full-time.
Other comments, colleagues? Catherine?
So, what do we hear from people a lot, especially when we were talking about the two words that I shouldn't speak tonight, Rockville Springs? And that was that people want jobs, jobs, jobs. And one of the things that this program does is trains people so they're ready to go out and get a job. And, or if they want to, they can go on to school, college, universities, or whatever, and continue that education. But they have the skills to come right out of there and get a job and make money and support themselves. So, that is one of the reasons that I support what you've heard the two gentlemen, my colleagues, describe, and that is I fully will support full-time for that position, for video tech, full-time. And the other thing is, I got a really nice email, I think maybe we all did, but anyway, from the college, a college professor yesterday, and he talked about how important this is. And for some of the reasons that you've heard already. But for me, number one is, we don't do this in high school much anymore to the point that you're skilled, and because of this program, we do. We used to have wood chopping and other things, automotive, all those things that people could do when they got out. And now, what we're finding is, we aren't educating people who, on those things. So, they don't know how to fix their own toilet, or even get the oil changed in their car, but I can teach you if you want. So, you know, I think we all need to take a step back, but in this case, we don't want to yank the rug out from something that's working for the reasons that Rick said, and the same with Chuck, and also because it's a job maker. And so, it's worth every penny.
Councilman Bretani?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. City Manager, the, the salary and benefits package for this full-time position is around a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars? Is that right? I'm try, I'm trying to get the numbers straight.
Based on the numbers I quoted, you one fifteen nine hundred for what we'd be budgeting.
Okay. And that includes the benefits, obviously, and the salary?
Correct.
For full-time?
Correct.
So, we talked about, we talked about the surplus, you summed up the surplus for us just a few minutes ago, the general fund surplus. And we've got, we've got a pretty healthy surplus that accounts for quality-of-life programs, a half a million, economic development, technology upgrades, including closed-circuit televisions. Those are all, you put, there you go. Those, those are our surpluses, okay? So, I mean, I think it's clear that, that we do have the discretion, realistic discretion to make this a full-time position. So, what we get for that number that you just said, which is around a hundred and fourteen thousand, is that we will continue to have quality programming on channels twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, annual parade coverage, work for other departments within the city, obviously, the partnerships that we've established, and the goodwill that we've built up around town. And, I mean, I put that on a cost-benefit analysis, and for me, it's a no-brainer, that this investment, in light of the, the surplus that we have budgeted for, should somehow and some way account for retaining this position as full-time? Because, you know, look at the downside of it. If we, if we let it go to part-time, those things that I just said will go away. The quality of channel twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight programming, the extensive coverage, the partnerships, the goodwill. And so, I, I just want to say that I not only support the position being reinstated as full-time, I think that financially, it's a feasible move for us to do this in this budget in light of our surpluses. And I'm sure that we can all agree in this room, we don't want to see channel twenty-six services go down, we want to see them go up. We want to see them continue to improve like they have done under Bill Way's great leadership. So, I'm in full support of finding a way to make this a full-time position.
Well-stated, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just add a couple of quick comments. I don't think there's any question for folks who live in Fairfield and who have access to channel twenty-six, that it plays a very, very important role in their lives. No matter where I go, no matter who I talk to, somebody is always talking about, I learn, I said, how do you know that? And I know it because I watch channel twenty-six. And, and because we're talking about this tonight, I can assure you that ten o'clock Friday morning, when I do my walk, someone's going to say to me, hey, you guys took a long time to get to where you're going. Anyway. Long time. The value of what we're talking about this evening goes far beyond a normal budget item. And I can appreciate the city manager and the finance director and the difficulty they're having trying to balance all of this, recognizing that we do have some pretty substantial obligations coming. But if you want people to realize the value of your water system, your sewer system, or any other system, tune into channel twenty-six. That tells the story, so. Mr. City Manager, I don't know where you're going to find the money, but it sounds to me like council is saying.
Is there any other comments on the budget?
No, good job. Do you need a motion?
No, no, not yet. Greg, go ahead.
To the resolution itself, we can actually incorporate that in, so. Fred, maybe you could help with what you want to say.
Yeah, here's what I'm thinking, and then Greg, please correct me. So, what I'm thinking, I'm, I'm going to propose this to council. Basically, it would amend the first budget resolution. So, you would adopt the budget resolution for the city, basically for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen nineteen, amended for basically an additional appropriation to bring the, the basically, to, to basically upscale the part-time channel twenty-six position to being full-time for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. That was kind of my understanding, okay? If that's acceptable with council, so.
That would be my motion.
I have to open the public hearing first.
We do.
Okay, no, but, that would be it. I see the city attorney's writing it down, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will open the public hearing. I don't have any request-to-speak cards on this item. Anyone choosing to do so should submit their cards now. Seeing done, we'll entertain your motion. Close the public hearing. And your motion again, Mr. Vice Mayor?
So, with you as, I have a whole series of resolutions here. We'll have to do the first two separately. The first resolution is twenty seventeen dash one sixty-three, which says adopt the budget and makes appropriations for twenty seventeen eighteen and twenty eighteen nineteen, accepting the financial plan, with the amendment of, like, maybe, the, or maybe the part-time channel twenty-six position full-time for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen fiscal year.
So, and making the appropriations for that. So, with that amendment, the motion would be in order.
It's been moved. Is there a second, please? Second, with Councilman Bretani, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And the next resolution is HA twenty seventeen dash zero-two. This is a housing authority resolution appropriating twenty seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-
This is a Housing Authority Resolution appropriating 2017, 18, and 2018, 19 budget, updating its financial plan. A motion to approve. All right, and then we can do some streamlining here and adopt the following resolutions in order. So, it'd be Resolution 2017-164, which approves the 2017, 18 general obligation bond property tax rates. Resolution 2017-165, establishing the 2017, 18 fiscal year appropriations limit. Resolution 2017-166, making certain findings related to development impact fees, and Resolution 2017-167, approving the city's investment policy. And all of these resolutions are city council resolutions, and one motion would be in order.
Been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Moy. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Really well done. And again, entire city staff working on this budget document lays out a very clear plan of where we're going, how we're going to pay for it, and when we're going to get there.
And thank you for saying that because that's the one thing I forgot in my presentation. I really want to thank my budget team, they are outstanding. I mean, we couldn't have done it with all, both Emily Combs, who's my budget manager, and Brian Chua, who's our senior budget analyst. I really want to thank all the departments. I mean, the quality document that you see in front of you is basically reflective of all of their great efforts. And I really want to thank the city manager's office as well, too, because, you know, David's obviously been with the city a long time, and he's been, you know, just a great guy in putting it together. So, and last thing, I just want to say, we're going to be applying again for GFOA and CSFMO for our awards program for both, both documents that you're seeing. So, thank you.
It's a model for other cities, for the collaborative planning and the execution. So, thank you very much. And we are going to sing "Happy Birthday"
No, we're not.
As we, as we adjourn this evening for Councilman Rick Vaccaro. So, here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Rick. Happy birthday to you. And on that happy note, we are adjourned to our next regular meeting on July 18th. Good night.